Okay, so it is one o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Dr. Simpson, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Alrighty. Sure.
Dr. Barman.
Present.
Ms. Bates?
Present.
Mr. DeShiel?
Present.
Dr. Getty?
Present.
Dr. Green? Dr. Brinkley? Ms. Halli?
Present.
Dr. Liddy? Dr. Lee? Ms. McCusker? Ms. McCusker?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Present?
Thank you. Dr. Miller McCarthy?
Present.
Ms. Morrow?
Present.
General Sumter?
Present.
Dr. Wilcox?
Present.
Mr. Wu?
Present. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And President Crawford?
Present.
And Dr.?
Good afternoon. I'm here. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
And I believe Dr. Green has joined us? Yes, so we have Dr. Green. Mr. Show?
You have a call. Thirteen members are present. Although I don't see Dr. Green on the screen.
Yes, she is.
I'm sorry. There you go. Thank you. You have thirteen members present.
Alrighty, very good. I want to welcome the board members, staff, and members of the public to this special board meeting. We greatly appreciate you adjusting your schedules to accommodate us. And today's meeting is going to be a virtual meeting. You will be able to see the video on the WebEx at our state board website. The agenda is published there. And the meeting will be, video will be archived there. At this time, I'm going to read a statement that would allow us to go into a brief executive session. Pursuant to Section 3-305D7 and the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the State Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matter. This time, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
To move.
Second.
Mr. Wu, motion, and seconded by Mr. DeShiel. Seeing no comments or questions, let's do a quick roll call. Dr. Simpson, if you can help us?
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Ms. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. DeShiel?
Yes.
Dr. Getty?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Halli?
Yes.
Dr. Lee? Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Dr. Miller McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Morrow?
Yes.
General Sumter?
Yes.
Dr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Mr. Wu?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
A motion to go into closed session carried.
We expect a return in about ten minutes, fifteen minutes at the most. Thank you. We turn to executive session. Okay, welcome back, everyone. I just need to make one correction. I inadvertently referred to the wrong section in the, in the statements on our notice. Correct that. That's pursuant with Section 3-305B1, not 7, of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The State Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matter, which we've done. And at this time, I'd like to give a little bit of background on, before we actually get into the actual business. I'd like to just give a little background on our search process. We have been very quiet about it because in searches of this nature, if you're not careful, you can run away outstanding candidates. So we've gone out of our way to be very quiet and very, and treat the things very confidentially. First thing I want to do is, is thank my search committee, outstanding group. I chaired it. I was co-chairing it with Senator Bates, Mr. Shawn Bartley, Ms. Rachel McCusker, who is also our teacher rep, Dr. Joan Millie McCarthy, and Mr. Jason Wu, our student rep. At the beginning of the process, we hired Greenwood Asher. We put out a competitive contract award, and we were fortunate to hire Greenwood Asher. And they provided outstanding executive search support to us. I want to thank Dr. Jan Greenwood and her team for the outstanding work that they performed. I'd like to thank our board. We had a number of meetings, sometimes meetings that ran on for a long time, sometimes in-tom-tu meetings, meetings that ran into the evening. The board was there. And our unsung hero, Dr. Simpson. She made everything happen. And we thank you for that. We had an outstanding search process. We drew candidates from across the nation and including Maryland. You know, we, we, I want to thank all of the people who participated during our outreach. We had about 229 responses. We talked to people in stakeholder groups. We talked to them in individual meetings, town halls, online surveys. People took time to complete the surveys, and here's what they said they wanted. They said that the ideal candidate is someone who creates a culture of inclusion, collaboration, and transparency. Someone who understands the education system from the inside out, who's actually been a teacher and an administrator. Someone who understands and leverages resources, being able to delegate and to engage different people. And probably most importantly, they wanted someone who would value students above everything else. We took that advice to heart. And we built those into our superintendent's search profile, and we used that to guide us. And as Greenwood went out into the market, talking to most of people, here's some of the things they said about Maryland. The feedback on Maryland and this particular opportunity was very positive. Maryland enjoys a strong reputation for its education systems. And I want to thank Doctors Salmon and all of the MSD staff and, and, and professionals here in the state of Maryland for the great work they've done to build a strong platform in which we can move forward. Thank you. People said that the opportunity was compelling. And several of them said that it was clear that the board was looking for, looking for a forward-thinking, innovative leader who would have a transformative impact on public education. You know, one of my concerns early on was that with the three-year term, that that would be an impediment to finding top candidates. It wasn't. We had over fifty-five people, around fifty-five people, to apply from across the nation, including Maryland. Some applied directly to the announcement, because we posted it all over the place. Some were nominated by other officials, screened by Greenwood, and then encouraged to apply. Some of these individuals were identified directly by Greenwood and recruited to apply. Our top candidate was nominated by senior officials and separately identified by the search firm. In fact, I'm not sure everyone knew this, but during the course of our search process, our top candidate was being actively recruited for other opportunities in other states. The search committee and the full board reviewed all of the applications. And from that, selected eleven individuals that we wanted to meet in first-round interviews. And then Greenwood started their extensive referencing. And referencing is when they go out and talk to references and, and not only ask to speak to the people that, that the individuals identify, but also other people that may be familiar with their work. So they talked to ten, twelve, or sometimes even more than that, individuals to try to get a sense of what was the person's performance, what were the work habits, what were the business relationships? And then to respond to any particular questions we had. And you know, by the end of the process, when we were down to our four finalists, Greenwood had amassed twenty, thirty pages of notes on each individual. Well, back to our first-round interviews. We did those virtually. Those were sixty-minute interviews. Eleven people, structured interviews. And after that, we reviewed the results, we reviewed some of the referencing, and the board, the full board, selected four individuals that we would invite in for in-person meetings and interviews. So we brought the four people to, to, to Maryland. We conducted extensive meetings and interviews. We spent hours with each finalist, not just to hear the standard answers that you get when you ask an interview question, but to try to get to understand and know who these individuals were. And one of the things that we found was that they had done their homework on Maryland. They knew our statistics, they knew our performance, they knew the things that we were doing great. They knew the areas where we could use some improvement. And they were all enthusiastic about the blueprint. They saw the blueprint as an opportunity to advance education within the state. And they also said with the blueprint, there's a clear indication that the state is willing to invest in education. Something they said that's not always the case. So after those interviews, we met, we reviewed the, each of the interviews, we reviewed the referencing, we looked at the evaluations, and then we adopted sort of the criteria along these lines. Number one, we said, let's just look at everybody's past performance, because past performance is one of the best ways to figure out what you're going to get once the person arrives. So look at that. We then thought deeply about their approach. What were they saying they were going to do? How were they going to do it? And if they were able to do it, would we get the desired result, the return on investment? And then the third thing that we looked at was risk. What's the likelihood, when you look at past performance and what they're proposing to do, that they would actually be able to achieve what they said? We had four truly outstanding finalists. And having done this kind of thing before, it is rare that in a, in a process like this, that you get four outstanding finalists. That's what we had. So that was our big challenge. But I wanted to say that one particular individual rose above everyone else. And his name is Mohammed Chardari. He is currently the Associate Superintendent and the Chief Strategy Talent and Innovation Officer for San Antonio's Independent School District. We'll hear a little bit more about him. Let me just say this about him. One of the things that I really caught my attention was that he thinks big and he thinks small. He thinks big because he thinks of big, bold, fresh ideas. He thinks small because he's able to turn those ideas into results. At this time, I would like to recognize my co-chair, couldn't have done it without her, Senator Bates.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a real pleasure working with you. It has been a very, very carefully constructed process. And I think we've come to a really fabulous conclusion. With the current blueprint on the front burner, we were looking for proven leaders to guide us on future education in Maryland. This particular candidate, our recommendation superintendent's enthusiasm for the blueprint's direction and his record of success in both Dallas and San Antonio provided us the confidence we needed that he would lead toward dramatic growth and student outcomes as we implement the strategies in the blueprint. It is critical that we move education in Maryland into a new era. And for that reason, I move that the board approve Mohammed A. Chardari as Maryland's new superintendent of schools.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second?
I second.
Thank you, thank you. So we had properly moved and seconded. We now open for discussion. Seeing no discussion at this time. Mr. Show, would you mind taking the vote?
I'm happy to. Senator Bates?
Yes.
Dr. Millie McCusker, Dr. Millie McCarthy?
Yes.
President Crawford?
Yes.
General Sumter? You can raise your hand, General Sumter.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Halli?
Yes.
Mr. Bartley?
Yes.
Mr. Dasher?
Yes.
Dr. Getty?
Absolutely, yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Ms. Morrow?
Yes.
Ms. McCusker?
Yes.
Dr. Wilcox?
Yes.
And Mr. Wu?
An excited yes.
The vote is now complete. And I am honored to say that the vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Very good, very good. We're going to invite Mr. Chardari to join us in, and so he'll be coming online. But I want to just say a couple of things to the board. One, our top priority for this year, our top priority, we said, was hiring a state superintendent. I don't think there's anything more significant than this that any board can do is to hire the right superintendent. I believe we've done it. And search committee, when, when Mohammed joins us and he accepts, we're done. Oh, man, so... We're, we're excited. So we want to just pose just a, a simple question to you, Mr. Chardari. The board would like to extend an offer to become our next superintendent? The board would like to extend an offer to become our next superintendent?
Do you want me to answer?
It'd be nice, it'd be nice.
Yes, um, I humbly and accept wholeheartedly. Uh, thank you very much.
Great, great. Will your wife be joining us as well?
Yes, uh, I just told her to log in, so if she should be joining right now, I'm just looking for hers, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, what we'd like to do is, oh, there you go.
Hi, Mohammed. Hi, everyone.
All right, how are you doing?
I'm doing very well, very excited. Thank you for having, letting me crash this party today.
Well, it is our honor. What I'd like to do is the board wanted to, um, offer its congratulations and then Dr. Salmon as well. So I'll just, um, uh, ask the board to just feel free to, um, express, um, any comment. Uh, Mr. Bartley, McCusker?
Hi, Mohammed Chaudry. I'm so excited that you'll be moving to the great state of Maryland, from the big state of Texas. I'm excited, uh, had the opportunity to dine with you and interview you, and I was thoroughly impressed. You're a California native like myself and Miss Morrow, and so we know you're going to fit right in in Maryland. We look forward to you advancing innovative programs under the blueprint of Maryland and creating the initiative so that the accountability board they put in place will have little to no work to do because you're going to be the effective leader we need to bring change to Maryland. Thanks for accepting the job.
Thank you. Ms. McCusker and then, uh, Dr. Lee?
Mr. Chaudry, welcome to Maryland, and I can't think of a more fitting place to welcome you, and in one of the schools that you're going to be overseeing and being a leader of here in, in Carroll County and at my elementary school. I'm so excited to work arm-in-arm with you hand-in-hand with you from the stakeholders across Maryland to make sure that every child in this building and in every building across the state of Maryland has a world-class education. And I know you have an eye and a heart for every kid here in the state of Maryland. So I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and join alongside you. Thank you so much for accepting.
Dr. Lee? Thank you.
Congratulations, Mohammed, and Anis. Um, I wanted to let you know that so many of your references describe you as visionary, innovative, transformational, uh, commitment to equity, a rising star, that you're ready for this. We have every confidence that you're going to do a great job, and we're just so excited that you agreed to take this challenge on, and I'm going to be cheering you on from, um, thank you.
Chip?
Mohammed and, and?
Or G?
Um, I, I just want to say how excited, how excited we are to have you join us. The entire board is energized by your optimism and your innova- innovative ideas, and I am looking forward to you having that same impact on Maryland and all of our stakeholders. I have been bubbling over as we've known that this was in our future, and I'm so happy that you've accepted, and I look forward to you and your wife joining us.
Great. The chip and then, um, Susan?
Uh, congratulations, Mohammed. Uh, we look forward to your leadership of the Maryland State Department of Education, and I'm excited to introduce you to Eastern Shore, Maryland, and the fine art of crab pecking. Uh, we, we wish you and your wife much success in this new chapter of your lives, and we pledge our support to you in transforming the educational experience for all the students of our state.
Great, great. Who is next? Uh, yes, Susan?
I just want to welcome you to Maryland. I hope that the transition and the journey from Texas to Maryland is needed one. Um, and I also want to tell you that I am so relieved that we are no longer keeping this secret. It has been very hard for me because I'm so excited to have you.
Excellent. Dale?
Thank you. Uh, Mohammed, it's, uh, it's really going to be exciting having you here, having, uh, lived in Texas for, uh, several years. Uh, I know that it's, I'm, I'm a Marylander at heart, but I know it's going to be an adjustment, and we'll have, have to help you as much as we can. There are a lot of, uh, traditions here in Maryland that I think are really good, and I'm really happy to have you. I look forward to working closely with you as I did with Karen. Karen's been a blessing.
Yes.
I've got a, you know, a great act to follow.
Yes.
Thank you, wonderful work.
Yes, thank you. So I think it's general and then, um, Holly and Jason?
Welcome. I'm going to invite you to come further down the Eastern Shore, and I'm going to show you how to use a oyster knife. And we're going to fatten you up by feeding you all this, uh, this seafood, but in any event, your energy and, and you are just out there moving through, I'm just hopeful that I can keep up with you and be part of all the wonderful things you are going to do. Thank you.
So Holly and, and Jason?
Welcome, congratulations. It's super excited to be, um, working with you over the next few years. Um, I have two, um, children who are students of Baltimore City Public Schools and on behalf of the city. I think it's going to be great to have you and your energy and your innovation, and so I welcome you on over to this next chapter.
Great, great. Who's next? Uh, Joan and, and Jason and then, and then Joan?
Hey, Mr. Chaudry, I'm excited to welcome you to the East Coast. Uh, thank you for accepting this role. Congratulations, and on behalf of all students, we are so, so ecstatic to see all the great work you'll do here in Maryland and the years of experience you'll bring as well.
Joan?
Welcome, Mohammed. We're so thrilled. Um, as you know, we did have dinner during your interview, and I just want you to know, you just got a little bit of taste of, of some, some of the humor, um, that we are capable of as we work together. So, uh, I welcome you and your family, welcome Anis, to the state of Maryland, and we stand by to support you and work with you on behalf of every single student, child in this state. I'm so excited. And, um, and, and just to, to stand on the shoulders of Karen, who has done such beautiful work for the state, um, you have some, quite a pair of shoes to fill, I know you will. So, so thank you for being here, and, um, we look forward to your tenure.
Anyone else? Okay, Laurie and then Vermel?
Congratulations and, um, welcome to both on, on behalf of the parents of Maryland. Um, we are very excited about, about new opportunities, um, and transforming our, our education system with the blueprint and, and the world of possibilities that, um, come with all of that. So, um, hopefully by July first, most of the cicadas will be gone, and so you won't have to experience that for another seventeen years. But, but outside of that, Maryland is a wonderful place, and we look forward to welcoming you both.
Thank you, thank you. Vermel?
Well, congratulations, Mohammed. Um, first of all, I think what tickles me the most is that Dallas has one less fan and Washington has one more fan.
We didn't have a check, we should have asked him.
But I, I, uh, welcome you to Maryland. Um, I started teaching in Maryland in nineteen seventy-four, and during that time, there were a lot, seen a lot of superintendents come and go. Um, but I hope that when you come, that you will stay and that you will do the wonderful things that I think that you're capable of. As it was one of my colleagues already mentioned, um, Dr. Salmon has done a wonderful job in organizing things and, and preparing things for you to come in and step in. Um, thank you, Karen, so much for your leadership for these past five years. And Mohammed, again, welcome to Maryland. Um, we looking forward to your visit in Charles County, which, I'm sorry, I'm very biased, but Charles County is the best county in the state, so please come and visit us here in Charles County, Anis as well, welcome.
Thank you. Well, I think we've gotten all the board members. Dr. Salmon?
Well, thank you for this opportunity and welcome, Mohammed. No one has a bigger smile on their face today than me. Because, um, it is, uh, it's, it's bittersweet, uh, to turn over the, the life's work one has had for forty-five years, but, um, it's time, and I really am excited about your appointment, and I look forward to having some days that we can meet together and do some transitioning so that your, uh, voyage here is seamless and that you can pick up right on the work that we are currently doing and run with it. Um, so I am just elated. Congratulations. Um, and, uh, please know that I will do everything possible to assist you in this transition. Congratulations again to both you and your wife.
Thank you, Dr. Salmon. Well, I think at this point, um, if you have, uh, a few comments, things you'd like to say, like you, Anis, please feel free to do so. Everyone, if you would mute your lines, okay, please do.
Thank you. Um, first off, Dr. Salmon, I heard I can meet with you multiple times, so I'm going to hold you to that, so thank you very much. I'm looking forward to, uh, you know, just downloading, uh, the amazing work you have done and just being able to carry the baton, so thank you very much, uh, for making that time. Um, thank you for the warm welcome, everyone. You know, my wife is here, and, and she is just as excited for the opportunity to serve the students, educators and families and communities of Maryland. Uh, thank you, President Crawford, Vice President Hallie, and all the members of the board. You know, I'm, I'm honored, uh, to have your trust, um, and look forward to partnering with you and every other willing stakeholder, um, to build upon a strong foundation in Maryland. Um, in every role I've held, whether in the classroom, whether as a teacher leader or a district administrator, students have always been my top priority, and that's, that won't change in Maryland. Um, I know it can sound like a bit like a cliche or something that's ripped out of a, a fourth grade textbook, social studies textbook, but Maryland is truly American miniature, which means it's a state that sets the tone and, and sets an example for the nation, especially when it comes to education. Um, the, the, the microcosm and the stature of, of Maryland, coupled with its state leader's commitment and unwavering focus on students, um, has without question solidified Maryland, um, as standing as one of the top states in the nation. But being one of the top states doesn't mean there aren't gaps, right? It certainly, uh, doesn't mean there isn't room for improvement, um, and I'm excited to work with all of you to propel, propel Maryland, uh, public schools back to the top of the national rankings and foster an environment that demands equity, celebrates innovation and values accountability. I often like to say we are only as strong as our most struggling student. We are only as strong as our most struggling educator. We are only as strong as our most confused and frustrated parent. And so that, that is, that will be my barometer for success. Um, with the blueprint, uh, for Maryland's future as part of MSD, as a, as a guide, serving as a guide for MSD in every county, district, the state leaders have shown remarkable commitment to the hard work that's necessary to bridge gaps and ensure every student has the shot to be successful. And I just cannot wait to hit the ground running. Um, thank you for your trust, and, um, and this is an honor of my lifetime until we look back ten years from now and see all the amazing things that we have done, and the country just follows along because Maryland has led the way. Thank you very much.
Did you want to say anything, Anis? Did you have anything? Please?
I just want to say that I'm, uh, equally excited. I will be doing less work than him, but I'll be there along the way. Um, and we're just so thankful for the warm welcome and the kindness, and, um, we are, as Mohammed said, we're humbled, and we will be servants to the community, the students and the educators of Maryland. And, uh, I'm very excited to add on a few more pounds to the pounds I added since I moved to Texas, so I'm ready to eat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This has been a great day. As we get ready to close, this has been extraordinary week. Tuesday's meeting ended an hour early. I don't think we've ever done that, and it didn't snow. I was afraid it was going to snow, so we got out an hour early. Went get out here about fifteen minutes early, but before I go, I want to again thank Dr. Salmon for her service and all of what she's done and the care for the kids, for the children, and built the platform on which we can actually move forward on it. This does not happen by accident. It's a lot of hard work, and we've had an opportunity, I've had an opportunity with her now for a couple of years and see the commitment, the hard work. And just again, want to thank you very much for everything you've done and your outstanding service to the children in the state of Maryland. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, but don't forget, we've got one more month of work to do.
Oh, no, I know we do because we went over a whole list of things you got to do before you leave.
Right, right, okay.
You don't get them done, you just going to have to stay until you get them done. Great, everyone, thank you so much, and Mohammed, welcome. We're excited. We've already, all the board members already have come up with at least ten things they'd like for you to do. They give you, we'll give you a week, we'll give you a week.
Sounds good. Only ten, but okay, we're good.
We still got plenty of time. Thank you so much, everyone. Public, members of the public, uh, we really appreciate you taking part in this memorable special meeting. At this time, the floor is now open for a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Lori Morrow. Seconded Rachel McCusker.
Mr. Sheldon, maybe we can do a voice vote for, um, for adjournment?
Yes, you can.
All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstained, we adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.